Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're grateful that you're here tonight for our Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 5th, 2015. We'll go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could have Commissioner Wilson for us.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is some approval of some past minutes going back to April 23rd, and there are several of those. There's a couple of them where I was not present, so it was just the two of you, and I think for that reason we should probably go ahead and continue that approval, and so I'll entertain a motion that we do that.
I would move that we move this to the next planning commission, the approval of what, you know, which minutes they are that you weren't here?
C and E, I remember C and E, so May 6th and June 18th are the two that I was not present for. Tracy's here now, so...
I think I was gone on 23rd. It'd be... I'll second the motion.
So we just, your motion just to move just those two?
Unless you had a concern about any of the others, we can approve the others. We might be able to approve those for Tracy.
Yeah, now Tracy's here. Anybody had a chance to go through?
I would say all of them.
Look at you. So I can go through these real quick. The first one was a work session, and held. We reviewed the CPAT and discussed, continued our discussions about the mixed use, general plan designation. So that's the one on April 23rd, and yeah, as you were gone for that one. May 6th had a zone change for the townhomes at Maggie's Band. It had preliminary plat for that same townhome, and then Meadow Creek Ridge. And there was some Title 15 text changes, so we recommend approval there. And then there was a work session that was held afterwards. June 3rd, conditional use permit for Verizon cell tower modification, zone change for the Parkview Townhomes where Commissioner Wilkinson still owes his donuts.
Yeah, I have a question on that. It says that my phone rang during the commissioner's meeting here, and I owe donuts, so can you tell me who I owe the donuts to?
It's anyone of the tenants in the next meeting.
Okay, all right, I can do that.
We like to have some fun.
You can also come.
That's great. And then preliminary plat for also for that Parkview Townhomes, Eagle's Nest, and then we adjourned. The June 18th, both myself and Commissioner Nielsen were not present for that. We continued discussion, that was another work session, that's right, continuing our discussions on mixed use. So Tracy, let's do those. And then our last seven meeting minutes was our last meeting, July 8th. Storage unit change, zone change up on the north end of town, and then lots of discussion on that one. And then Eagle Crest development up on the east side of town, preliminary plat for Eagle Crest. Any questions or concerns about those nets? I guess I'll entertain a different motion.
Right.
Do we need to approve each one separately?
I don't think so.
You can approve them in mass. Okay, I'll make an emotion, all of the minutes, on the dates listed.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Tagg and a second by Commissioner Wilkinson. All in favor? Aye. Great. Our next item is the zone change on Canyon Creek. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just talked about this briefly, and I began from the meeting started to mention that we don't want to take this request too lightly, but frankly, where the applicant's requesting a zoning change to make the zoning more restrictive and to potentially allow for retail development, those are things that generally we as the city look very favorably upon. So, subject property is on Kirby Lane, between Kirby Lane and US 6. I understand that Woodbury Corporation's in the process of purchasing that. There was a trust plan located on that subject property for a number of years. It's outlined, kind of in red here, you can see it pretty well because of the coverage next to it. You can see properties to the east are already zoned, commercial too, and the proposal is that to change from the industrial one zone, I-1 zone. See the gray color here, all of those properties are currently zoned, industrial at one, and again, the changes go from that zoning district to commercial to... The Development Review Committee reviewed this a couple of weeks ago, recommended it be approved. Got a public hearing scheduled, but due tonight. To consider this request, we'll get to City Council in a couple of weeks.
Commissioners have any questions? We're set. This is a public hearing. We need a motion to move into public hearing.
I would agree, so...
Okay, so we'll...
We do that sometimes.
We do it sometimes, yeah, so I just want to make sure we're doing it right here. So, it's what you get for having to volunteer for it and figuring out your way. So, it's a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing and invite anybody present that would like to make a comment about this zone change. Seeing none, we'll let the record state that we didn't have anybody that wanted to come up and make a comment, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments or discussion amongst the commission?
Well, I think we talked about this earlier. It seems to fit where we're going with this area. No objections from staff. Doesn't seem to be any reason to oppose it.
I think just for those that are maybe watching or the audience today, our discussions as a planning commission is we are, we're starting the process of reviewing our general plan. So I think the direction that our discussions have been at this point will point towards being okay with this, so I don't see that I have any issues with it either. So if anyone wants to make a motion, we'll let you do that.
I do just one comment, question.
Yeah, would you come forward, please?
Yeah. It was just a question. I haven't until you said where we're going in this area. What do you mean by that comment?
So this is the area, you're familiar with this location?
Mm-hmm.
So that entire area, of course, we have Walmart, you have other retail and commercial developments coming in, and so a lot of that area is turning commercial, so this is just an extension of that. That's kind of what I meant.
That's what you meant, but what do you mean about the stuff that, I mean, you only have a little bit now left, it's industrial. What did you comment to that?
That there's just a little bit left?
Well, that building right there is still in the gray area. I mean, you've taken everything that used to be industrial and changed it all to C2. You say you're changing the general plan, I just want to know what your comment to that is. What are you looking at changing?
I think that was the one comment, so...
Oh, you got it right, you have another comment.
Well, his first was that we're looking at this area, and so I don't know when he says the area, what area he's talking about, if he's talking about Prusona or Sapa, it's not Prusona, it's Sapa. Whether you're talking about that whole area, or you're just talking about the one little area, what, I mean, what are your plans? Are you planning on pushing more and more?
I think just generally, an extension of this area that's commercial or the development's coming, it would make sense to, if there is opportunity for commercial development, to just, you know, extend that out and all. It won't affect this, and you know, we may decide that...
So where have you moved your industrial area to?
We haven't moved it anywhere.
So you've taken, you've taken all the industrial now and don't have any industrial area for industrial, all you have is retail in Spanish Fork?
No.
Can we show the bigger map of the industrial area?
Just curious.
This tail is gray, this is all.
All over there?
Yeah.
So your desire would have all of it on the other side of the freeway?
I think that's...
Not necessarily.
I'm just trying to figure out where you're going with your general plan and what you're thinking of that little...
I'm just, I'm speaking much more narrow than maybe what you interpreted or what I said. This area right here is all we're talking about tonight.
Tonight? Okay, but when you say the general plan, are you discussing the general plan, or are you going off the general plan?
We don't know yet, we just started that... What we just started that conversation. So obviously, this area is commercial, this area is future plan for the hospital that's discussed, that's a business park development, or zoning, excuse me, and then this area up here would be the industrial zone that we're kind of talking about. What is, what is the right thing for that? Is the industrial zone the correct zoning for that, or general plan designation?
See, and that's what worries me, if you're going to take all of it up there and change from industrial, what are you going to do to this one little spot that's not, that's not your retail?
You're talking about where it's at?
Yeah. What do you think of it?
I don't have the answer to that, sorry.
I don't think the idea is that we would change that with that industrial business operating there, that there's no intent to try to force something on somebody that's already moved.
So what do you do with running 24/7 at night, what kind of makes noise and stuff like that, all this other zoning, how did you move in here, you mixing industrial with other stuff?
And that's, we don't feel like, it's not an incompatible use to have a commercial facility. If it were residential there, that may be a different issue, but I don't, I don't think we're foreseeing any kind of residential necessarily in this area, so compatibility of uses will be something that we'll definitely take into consideration as we look at what the future for that area looks like.
So can you change all that stuff on me? I mean, difference of different qualifications of zoning and different things like that?
Maybe there's two things we need to understand here. So general plan provides a vision, that doesn't change the underlying zoning.
Well, I know that the general plan used to have that as industrial originally.
Right, right.
That's what the general plan was, and it's changed.
Because you're concerned there's not enough industrial left for...
I am a little bit concerned, I mean, well, and also because I work at Sapa, I'm concerned about what you're going to do with my livelihood.
I don't think we're doing that.
Yeah, we don't think we're going to touch on this.
Other than you bring all this down there now, we have to be, I mean, we have aluminum down there that is very, you know, that people come in and take their free will, you know, even more people, more people down there is going to cause a lot more, a lot more problems for us.
Well, we appreciate the input, and we'll consider that as we...
Because that's all I'm concerned, is I wasn't worried until he said, you know, this the area, it sounded to me like, you know, when like you said, that top area, that it is industrial, you're really looking at changing that.
That's part of our, essentially... Whether it does happen or not?
Yeah, I know, I understand that. I don't know whether it will or not, I'm just voicing my opinion there, that you moved all the industrial onto the other side of the freeway, it looks to me that's like what your general plan is.
And it's been that way for, I don't know, Dave, how long has that been? How long has this been industrial? In general plan?
Since it was annexed, I'm sure.
Well, no, that was, but I'm saying that all this other here was industrial, so that's all, always industrial. And it was industrial for a long time also. So that's my concern, I just wanted to know, if I need to be concerned about where you're going, if I need to start doing some things, or what, because every, every time it's just a little piece, a little more, a little more, a little more. I don't understand why this was never done before now, this little piece, why?
You know, I think from my perspective, it's one of those things where I kind of just thought that it was, because it's always been kind of part of Woodbury's plan, and I think it's just something that got slipped through the cracks, and I always just assumed that it was already zoned.
I was also, I was a little bit surprised that it wasn't, that's why I was just kind of surprised why it wasn't before, when they were doing the whole thing, and so what that means, will they be doing piecemeal all along there, or is that, see, that's what I'm saying, it's not, it's not a plan, if you just keep doing little pieces at a time, it's just like, whenever we want to do it, we'll change it. It doesn't seem like there's any following of the plan at all, but this Woodbury thing, it's just, take this piece now, and then six months down the road, we'll take this other piece and change it. Can't they plan it out better and get the whole thing done at once? Just curious.
Well, the history of the, of this area has, there's been a lot of, actually, a lot of discussion, a lot of planning, but you know, until, until someone's ready to pull the trigger, you know, none of these types of decisions to change zoning, for example.
So you don't, so they don't, I guess if they don't own the property, like you say, he's going to buy that property. He's not owning it, there's, he can't change the zoning because he has no interest.
Well, there's probably isn't a reason to make the request until, and the city wouldn't, I mean, I guess what our perspective is, is the city, like Bruce said, city has its goals, and we look at what's, you know, what's coming with the future is, and this area, the future is just more commercial than it is industrial right now.
So, I mean, I understand that, but that's, so that's the other question I have, though, can you change any zoning at any time without somebody requesting it, can you just change it?
Yeah, I suppose we could, I'm sure. Yeah, in fact, we talked about this area. For strategic purposes, we talked about changing the zoning here, so that if a business decided to come to Spanish Fork and wanted to know if we had a place ready with proper zoning already, that they could buy it more quickly, you could be ready. We did, so we did talk about it. So yeah, you can...
So you take the place where Iron Homes is up there, right, is that what it's spelled? With the place home?
Iron Homes.
Yeah, so that's, that's industrial now. So if you wanted, could you just change that zoning?
And what would happen is that they would be a, you know, I don't know if the word grandfather is the right word, I don't know.
Alien law conforming.
Yeah, alien law conforming is what they call it, and so making that use would be able to continue to stay.
That's what I'm curious about, even though you change the zoning, it'll stay there until they...
Yes, until the property changes, the change is hands, I think that's what...
Yep, even with that. There's also, you know, a public hearing like we're having tonight where there's the input, and you know, the, anyway, it wouldn't just be under the table without anyone knowing, without anyone noticing.
No, I understand that, I understand that as well. I was just curious how the others going there, and what the future direction was there, so...
Do you mind stating your name for them?
Londo.
Londo?
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Is this a recommendation to the City Council?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would move that we change the zoning from an I, is it 1 to a C2, is what the recommendation is, for new trust plan, I don't know what the official name of that area is, but I would make that recommendation to the City Council to do that.
Well, seconded.
So we've got a motion.
It's the Canyon Creek zone change.
Is it, no, Canyon Creek zone change.
We got a recommendation from Commissioner Wilkinson, and a second by Commissioner Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any vote?
Thank you.
All right, the next item is conditional use permit for 3 in the north accessory apartment.
Mr. Anderson.
Once again, thank you. Let me start by just talking a little bit about accessory apartments. We'll talk about what they are, and what rules come into play in Spanish Fork, and somebody maybe wants to have a legal accessory apartment. So first of all, by definition, an accessory apartment is a dwelling unit, exists within an existing single-family home. Typically, they're in a basement, and the owner of the property has to live in the home. We wouldn't necessarily care if they were in the basement part or the upstairs, but the owner has to reside on premise to have a legal accessory apartment. So again, it's a dwelling unit within a bigger dwelling unit, we call it a single-family home. So for example, an accessory apartment gets approved by the Planning Commission as a conditional use, and we call that a single-family home with an accessory apartment. We have a lot of accessory apartments in the city. The vast majority of the legal accessory apartments that we have are in kind of this part of the city, area that we'll talk about here in a minute, or the area that surrounds the City Office Building, the part of the city that has the gridded square blocks, the old part of town. And a lot of those accessory apartments have been there for a really long time, and I'll touch on that when we talk about some of the specifics of this request in just a minute. Now, in order to have a new accessory apartment approved, a property has to meet a couple of conditions or criteria. First of all, the property has to be zoned, either R16 or R3. And again, most of the parts of the city that are zoned R16 and R3 are found on the blocks that surround this kind of old historic part of town. In this case, the property is zoned R16. Also, the property has to be at least 10,000 square feet in size, not quite, but almost a quarter of an acre for a home to have a legal accessory apartment. In this case, the property's about twice that size, almost 20,000 square feet, or even close to about a half of an acre. The most really are the two main criteria, when we get people that call us about potentially having an accessory apartment approved, most of the time when we say no, it's because the property's not zoned properly, or because the property's not large enough. And in this case, again, the property is zoned properly, and the property is big enough for the city to approve a conditional use for an accessory apartment. So, obviously, tonight this is on your agenda as a conditional use, accessory apartments are just that, and we'll talk for a second about what a conditional use is. A conditional use, you guys are well aware, but what else is benefit? There are uses that are allowed in a particular zone. You know, in the case of accessory apartments, there's some criteria that have to be met, but provided those criteria are met, we're obligated as the guy in zoning jurisdiction to approve conditional uses. But as part of the approval, if you as the land use authority want to impose conditions with the intent that those conditions would mitigate any anticipated adverse impacts of the conditional use, legally, you can do that as the land use authority. So that's where the word conditional ties into what we're talking about tonight, the acquisition of site-specific conditions. Any questions, or anything guys want to talk about, just relative to what accessory apartments are, or criteria?
This was already discussed with the Development Committee?
Yes.
And besides the Title 15 compliance, there were a couple other things that the city was requiring of them. Can you review that?
Yeah, so in this specific case, I should talk for a second about what the exact proposal is. So the property's located at 260 West, 300 North, right here. There's an existing single-family dwelling here. We might have a better image, like a page or two down.
A little bigger, scroll down.
Yeah, just scroll down, I think. Not a lot better, but a little bigger. So this is the subject property, existing single-family home there, which is several decades old. Several other buildings on the property, different accessory buildings, including a garage structure here, which, I remember the amendment that we made to Title 15 a while ago. I'm almost certain that based on the criteria that we created for garages, that this qualifies as having enough room to be a two-car garage, which is another one of the criteria that we have in order to have an accessory apartment, have to have a total of four parking spaces off-street. Two of them have to be a garage. It's really the idea, although we don't regulate this, that each unit, the single-family part and accessory part, we're going to have access to a garage space and at least one other space, which incidentally, with this property, there is a lot available for parking, so that hasn't been an issue, but sometimes it is, sometimes that's one of the things that disqualifies some people from having an accessory apartment.
So Dave? Does that very thing alone would disqualify probably a huge percentage of people that may want to do this, is that right? Just don't use the other much space?
And oftentimes, we sit down with people and talk about building a, maybe a new detached garage on their property to be able to meet that criteria, they simply don't want to incur that expense or otherwise impact their property to do that, so you're right, particularly given we're talking about a part of the city where if there, if there was a garage built with the house back in the 1920s or 30s, maybe when the home was built, it's usually a pretty small, single-car kind of arrangement, so yeah, that's...
And then it's the idea that the parking would be a tandem parking arrangement, where two cars and a garage, two cars in the driveway, in essence?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay. As long as there's space that's nine by 18 for each parking spot, it doesn't matter where they are located on the site, is that...
That's my recollection, yeah. So, and to try to get to Commissioner Wilkinson's question. Currently, it's been this way, as I understand it, for a number of decades, there's a kitchen in the basement of the structure that we're talking about. It's been used in the past as an accessory apartment, owners residing upstairs. It may have been used as a duplex as well, where owners weren't living on premise, but again, what we're talking about tonight would require that the owners reside on the property. I'm just talking about that for a second. That's an important stipulation, I believe, and we've talked about. Just given that in most cities' experience, with accessory apartments and having the owners reside on premise, you end up not dealing with some of the issues that more typically come when you have absentee landlords, people that simply have rental properties, oftentimes don't live in the community even, just simply more of a propensity to have less oversight, less concern about who's maybe renting in a basement, or different things like that. So for me, that's a really important component of our program here with accessory apartments, where the owner has to reside on premise. That's no guarantee that you're going to get great property maintenance and, you know, healthy screening, you have to make attendance, that type of a thing, but again, the propensity at least is that that helps avoid some problems that you get when the owner's not on the property. So, the home switch-in basically is set up to have an accessory apartment in the basement now, but as part of this approval, they will have to meet some current code requirements by way of upgrading the electrical, perhaps make some other changes like the HVAC and that type of a thing. And as the Development Review Committee reviewed the proposal, that indeed is the recommendation that they made, that the conditional use be approved, subject to the applicant meeting any current building code requirements to kind of apply. And one of the big ones there, so we spelled it out separately, is just meeting any conditions that our electrical department has for accessory apartments. For example, we'll need to have a second meter added. We have lengthy history of challenges that come when two separate dwelling units share one power meter, so we work hard to avoid creating new arrangements where that's the case. But all in all, again, as far as having a conditional use approved for an accessory apartment at this location, it's been pretty easy for us as staff to see that it meets the criteria that we have spelled out in Title 15. There are eight or nine different stipulations that have to be met that are within your staff report, and we recommend that the conditional use be approved, subject to those three conditions that we run in this line.
Can you talk about the footprint of the buildings that exist on the property, and if any changes will be made to those?
Yeah, thank you. Relative to this request, there will not be any changes to the footprint of the single-family home. No expansion. That's not to say that in the future they couldn't apply to go through this process again, to be able to expand the conditional use, maybe add some foot, and that type of a thing. Given the nature of the structure, I'd be really surprised if that ever happened. They could do that, but no...
But it wouldn't be that they could go and add something behind the structure they would have to add on to the existing structure, is that right?
We don't allow accessory apartments in accessory buildings. They have to be part of the primary dwelling, primary structure, the dwelling on the property.
So if there was any addition made in the future, would be to the existing home?
It would be, yeah. That's not to say that they couldn't apply for a permit, maybe add a garage or something like that, if they met our criteria for that type of thing, we'd issue that permit, but what we're talking about tonight would be... But what we're talking about tonight would be contained in the existing single-family home. I don't think you would see any change in fact from the exterior to that structure. Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing and invite any members of the public to come forward and ask any questions or make any statements. When you do come up, if you'll state your name, we'll record you.
My name is Cheryl Hill. I live on 300 North, 300 West, it's down the street from this request. I'd like to approach this from a little different perspective. I know that I can't talk about the legal ramifications of what this is all involved in, but let me talk to you a little bit about that street. I'm 82 years old, and that street has been there since I was just a kid. Now, that street has some historical significance. I don't know whether you're aware, but as you come off Main Street, there's a big house right there behind the stores. That big house is a historic house. It was built by a pioneer, and the brick that is in that house was made by a pioneer. If you go to the other end on 300 West, there are two pioneer homes there. The one big home, I know when it was made, it was made in the 1800s. Now, if you go down that street, it's very interesting to see what that street represents. There are homes there that are over 100 years old, I know. And there are homes that are 70 years old. Now, my question here is this. When is Spanish Fork going to take a real strong stand on these historical streets and make sure that zoning laws do not interfere with the historic nature of those streets? I think it's critical for our younger generation to see those homes. Those homes have been constantly lived in as single-family homes for so many years. And now we're asking to come in and make apartment house on one of them, and this is going to open up a whole can of worms. What I think the city ought to do is they ought to take a survey of this whole town and find those blocks that have this historical footprint and make sure that zoning laws are not passed that change the nature of those. Now apartments will change the nature. I can tell you that, I don't care if it's one of these accessory apartments. It changes the nature and opens up a whole can of worms. That street needs to be protected. That whole street needs to be protected. Those homes are not magnificent, of course not. But what they represent is how this city was built from the very beginning. It was the working class people who built Spanish Fork. Those homes, those old homes along there are working-class homes, single-family. And they've made a great contribution to this city. Now, there aren't a lot of streets like this one, I know that. Some of them have been botched up, some of them have torn down the great buildings. As a kid, I was just sick when they tore that beautiful red sandstone house on Main Street down and built that old Safeway store. What a travesty that was. That was a beautiful red sandstone home. We have just destroyed our connection to the past. If we open this up, it will cause a real problem. I plead with you. Number one, as a city, find these blocks that need to be preserved. And number two, use this one as an example and don't change the zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any other?
My name is James Andrews. On my grandmother's side, on the other side of the block. My question is, next one. My problem is with these accessory apartments. Who's gonna place it? Who's gonna tell them? I mean, where my parents live, I lived in LaFolha. And this house had 30 people living in it. City never did anything with it, nothing. Is there rules? How many people can live in this place?
Sure.
I mean, just like he said, this is a wonderful neighborhood. I live on one of the busiest roads in Spanish Fork. If I go in my backyard, I don't want to listen to a car trying to get away from that road, just sit in my backyard. I don't think, I mean, I can't understand where these people are coming from, but who's gonna place it? City never did anything in LaFolha.
Let me just ask you a question. Would it be different for you if the family that lives there, let's say a new family bought the house, and they had a large family, so they had several children downstairs, several upstairs, and overall, you know, quite a few more people in the house than if they had the current situation and renter? Does that change your view of, in other words, the impact?
If it's a family, fine, but you're talking about a whole different family living in the basement. I don't know. I just want to know.
Is it the impact, the number of people, or what's your...
With the people within it? I don't know. I just wanted to know who would be able to place it, I mean, who? I don't know. But what they did in LaFolha is a joke.
Frank Nelson, we just got an entry to the north end of what that is. And I just was wondering, as far as that being, I'll just follow up on what this question was. Does the city have some kind of, I mean, if the people move in there, there's people who, I understand, have to live as the residents and owners of the property in one section. Are they limited to what they can rent the lower section to or one of the other sections? I mean, does it have to be a family? Can it be students? Can it be whatever they decide, or is there a stipulation that way?
For the staff on that?
That's a great question. We require that both units be used as units for, as single-family units is the best way to say it.
About stairs and downstairs?
One kitchen, one laundry room, everybody having access to all parts of the unit. Now, if wanted to have two roommates down there, living in that kind of arrangement, two separate bedrooms, why not have four different roommates living in one of those dwelling units? Maybe more than that, that would be legal. All that we regulate is whether it's one dwelling unit or something other than that. So where things start to become red flags for us, typically we don't have this issue in this part of town. It is more often the case in the newer part of town, where you've got maybe a 4,000-square-foot dwelling, and people start to partition off different parts of the dwelling. There may be a separate kitchen was constructed for canning or some other purpose at one point in time, so that was allowed, but then people close off a door and add a wall, and all of a sudden you've got a couple of different laundry rooms and two distinct dwelling units. When that's the case, that's a red flag. That's when Mr. Sant, the city prosecutor, gets involved and we take enforcement action. But relative to this situation, I hope this makes sense, does that make sense? As long as they're just individual dwelling units, sometimes we use the phrase, housekeeping units as well, one kitchen, you know, shared access to all parts of the dwelling. You could have, the owners could rent, maybe like college students or somebody else that wouldn't be related.
They could rent to roommates. Roommates, because less students. So not necessarily family first.
Correct, as long as the structure is one housekeeping unit, is maybe a better phrase to use in this case, that would be legal. Now, that said, I don't think staff's recommending this in this case. But the last time we looked at a conditional use, I think the planning commission did impose some conditions about how many people could reside in the accessory apartment. I believe that had more to do with the size of the property. That was in a new development, pretty narrow lot. There was some concern about having any more vehicles than just four. But you can impose conditions as part of this process if you feel that's appropriate to limiting. I don't think that's something staff's recommending, but that's something you can consider.
Thank you for that question. Because that just becomes a concern if there are a number of students who are being moved in there. And then, because we talked about the number of cars that could be on-premise that the required to have, if you start, you know, being able to put that, then all of a sudden you've got a lot more traffic going in there with parking that's really not designated for parking. Another concern too is with that, apparently they're not going to be building any structures for the vehicles, or will there be? Is there any proposal? I guess that's my other, because when we come in here, there's not really been any shown proposals as to what you're attempting or wanting to do to accommodate those parking vehicles or whatever else. So they know they've got one garage, and it's maybe a car and a half garage, and then some sheds in the back portion. Are they going to be removed and other buildings taking place there? Or can they do that?
What's been represented to us is that there aren't going to be any exterior changes to any of the structures on-premise, with maybe one exception. They might change the door on the front of this building if they chose. Make it a lot easier to get to.
Not one garage, you're saying?
Yeah. But with our requirement that a garage space be nine feet wide, 18 feet deep, this structure qualifies without changing, in the exterior look of it at least. So they wouldn't have to, and I think that's their plan.
To do something like that.
Right, so we've considered, that building has proposed to meet the garage requirement, and obviously there's plenty of other surface area for parking outside.
So there won't be another de-cast garage per se being considered there?
With what we're talking about.
Or could they do that?
No, but certainly if they applied for a building permit tomorrow to build an accessory building, a garage, any place on the property, if they met our setback requirements, just like any property in the city, we'd issue the permit for that, but they haven't discussed that with us at all.
And that's something proposed at all to this point, so. So basically, what's happening is accessory apartment to existing buildings that are there or what's going to be used, okay? And then just one other question I have, I guess, is with the property we've got there, we on occasion park farm equipment back there. I don't live there anymore, but we do have from my mother's house. We can go back and park farm equipment, I keep some equipment back there. Currently, there's a fence that's a cedar post fence with kind of a solid wood, supposedly maybe about a day high. Is there anything that's required from the development?
Is that right here, Frank?
Yes. Yeah. That fencing would need to be changed in between the properties? With people renting or anything out? Is there anything that has to be of that, just for my own information?
Based on the regulations, I don't believe so.
There isn't anything regulation-wise that there would need to worry about the fencing between. So if there was something that was to be there, it would need to be between us and those people. That's what I was just, okay.
Question for you, Frankie. For you, is it the impact of more vehicles or more people that concern you the most?
Both. I just, when you're saying that college students could come in there, then each college student could come, if there's four or five, six, whatever they may decide, it doesn't sound like there's a limitation to what they could have.
So if a limitation were put on there, like Dave said, a condition of X number of people living or X number of vehicles, that would be a little easier for you to support? There were fewer?
Yeah, well, I don't hold it to support, but I'm just asking some questions to try to find out, because I'm just saying that if it's just a family that has, you know, one or two children, then that creates a whole different situation than if there's opened up to six or seven students who can come in, and then you've got some parking that can take place with here, but then there's enough area back there that they could have all sorts of vehicles parked across there. But I guess my other concern is, like I said, I do have some equipment there which becomes interesting for young children or teenagers, whoever, to hop across the fence and go explore that. We have some things in my mother's backyard that are there for our family when we guys want to play. And we've noticed that because they are there, there's not other, you know, things for children to play with. We've had a daycare group, like it was doing daycare, that would have their children come down, and that's where the daycare was, it was in our backyard. Bring blankets, lunch, and everything, and that's where they could come in the morning. And then when the mothers would come to pick them up a few minutes before, they would take them back. We didn't know what was happening, and we found out that we were becoming the daycare, and they were being paid for daycare that they never provided, per se. So I guess it's just a concern that we do have some things that could be an attraction. And so that's my question with the fence, if there was anything that needed to be done there, because I wouldn't like very much if there were, you know, a lot of people there, a lot of young children there, you know, get over a fence, come in where we've got some equipment or whatever else, and then proceed on into the yard.
In that regard, it would probably be no different than if a new family moved in and you said, oh, I think with these little children, this new family, we're going to, you know, change the fence. Your liability or your risk wouldn't be any different now than it would be with a...
No, not necessarily, but I'm just saying that's a concern that I have. I'm just asking questions as far as if there was something there, would they be required fence-wise, or would we both need to be required fence-wise to kind of make a change? There's nothing that would require them to have to do anything with the fence under the current conditions because they're doing a succession thing, so that's correct. Okay, good enough. Thank you very much.
My name's Stephen Stewart, and I grew up on that property. It says 340 North adjacent to this property. My father installed a great big commercial window to have the most beautiful view of that chicken coop, which we've had for the last 50 years. And we've been, it's part of the family. But my concern is this, once you've turned that into a two-unit dwelling, and by the way, we've known the occupants of that property for 50 years, and we were not aware that it had been sold, and the occupants are no longer living there. Greetings. But my concern is, you turn a unit into a two-dwelling home, and they sell it, who polices it to make sure that if the, who owns it wants to turn it into two apartments? And if not, who evicts the people in the basement? Who's going to overlook in the future that when this is sold, the stipulations that the owners live upstairs? It's a stipulation, the owners have to buy that, and they're going to have to live there, and they do not have a two-unit apartment. I'd like to know who polices that.
I think the neighbors do more policing than anybody else, and if something's reported in the city, we'll have to follow up on that if it's not in compliance.
Okay. All right, well, we'll keep our eyes open.
Is that right or wrong?
That's right. Right and wrong. So we got to keep our eyes open on that one. So who is...
And they say they can live either upstairs or downstairs. There's no limitation as to where the occupants have to live, so.
I understand that. But I wasn't aware that it changed hands, and I know the owner doesn't live there anymore. So who is currently owning that place? Can you tell me who the owner is?
The applicant's Terry Euler. That's who's applied, I assume, that...
Is his father the Euler that's on the city, so high by the city?
Terry Euler is Dave Euler, the city manager's son.
Okay, so it did change hands?
So your suggestion is that it doesn't meet the criteria because the owner doesn't live there, is that...
Well, I wasn't aware that it changed hands. We, none of us were.
I don't know who lives there, but the city's determined that they...
Currently, no one lives there.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody lives there today.
They're selling the property. And there's people in there.
Yeah, that was my concern, because I know the owner doesn't live there.
So if the new owner lives there and you have a renter, is that, is all your concern? So if the new owner lives there and you have a renter, is that, is all your concern, or...
Boy, yeah, I just don't want to see a two-apartment dwelling, nobody lives there, and I don't want to see that in the future, and I wasn't aware of how that would be tracked, and apparently it would be beyond, be beyond your scope to do so, so it's up to us to make sure that is done.
Dave? Mr. Stewart? Are there any other comments?
Dave, when you, earlier you mentioned that previously this had been, been used as an accessory apartment downstairs where two different families, is, is that right or wrong? I know that people out here would know, has that ever been an accessory apartment downstairs?
Yes.
Where, where, so, so it already has been utilized in that way? And what the city is trying to do is make it so, if they're going to do that, that's legal, and they're not doing it under the table. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Where it was used as a...
As an accessory apartment before.
As an accessory apartment, and they stopped using it for some period of time that was more than a year, and they lost their legal...
Right. So, so they did have a legal right to it previously? I thought maybe it was just done on the slide or something?
So there was a continued conditional use permit in essence in place?
Yeah. Um...
Wouldn't there be a record of that?
The structure was built back well before anything that we'd have a record of a built-in permit for. My understanding of when the apartment was used in the basement would be in the same way. Our records go back to maybe the early seventies, talking about some period of time that predates that. Now, if the apartment had been in use since the end of the day, we would not be having this discussion. They have the legal right to continue to use it as it was used, it's the... So we mentioned grandfather earlier, that's what it would be, but because they stopped using the apartment, in order to start using it again legally, you, the planning commission would have to approve a conditional use, which is why we're here today.
So the, but, did the banks ever have anybody else living in there besides their family? So they were also using it as an accessory apartment, and so that's been recently, is what you're saying? So it has been used as an accessory apartment recently, which...
Not within the last few years that we understand, so that's why...
Nineteen thirty.
Oh, no, I'm talking about Roger. That family. Okay, so it hasn't been recently used.
Okay. Yes, sir. Can I just make one, one other comment? For some of the neighbors that were there, because I went in and we, I have to up here?
So that would get reported.
I just live back there.
Just people at home want to make sure they hear what you say.
Yeah, my, yeah, my wife is just probably going to kick me right out. I might end up in that accessory apartment, so.
Yeah, you might be the next one.
I might be. I might be. There, there was some concern, I know with some of the neighbors about this being a zone change to be able to accommodate maybe like a fourplex or a duplex or something like that, and, and the zoning on it just to, is, that, that can't happen, nor could it happen if they even got the property, nothing like that could ever happen because that's how it's zoned, and that is just not even within that zone. And I know the other neighbor, I thought they were going to be here this evening, but they reminded me to make it, had a concern about that, that if they allowed them to do that, then there possibly could be a zone change with that much property, there might be a push to do something like that, so just understand.
Like building on the back of a flag lot is what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, and so just, just as record or to make fairness of that, so that, I don't know if she's watching this or whatever else, that couldn't possibly happen, and no construction could take place unless there wasn't a zone change, and that, it just wouldn't happen, so.
Okay, I think there's kind of two things that I see there, and staff helped me out here. Right now, flag lots are not a allowed thing here in the city. So for a separate, so a separate piece of property, they couldn't take this property, split it into two, and create a flag lot for it to be built on. Now, in terms of zoning, I'll turn to you, Dave, in terms of what, what is allowed within an R16 with regards to multifamily housing dwellings?
Today, we only allow single-family dwellings in the R16 zone. Frankly, it's kind of new. Up until seven or eight years ago, you could have done duplexes, three-plexes and four-plexes, which is why when you drive through this older part of town, you see those scattered throughout, it's just a matter of having enough land to meet a certain requirement, and you could have done multifamily structures, but if you might have been on, we're providing the city council, I could make that change, you might have been on the planning commission, so it would have just barely predated you when, in an effort to do some of the things that were mentioned tonight, we, as a city, became concerned about the ratio of renter-occupied, owner-occupied structures in this part of the city. Understanding that a certain number of renters is fine, and communities work well with that, but you want to keep a balance, and in an effort to maintain a certain balance, the city council changed our ordinance so that in the R16 zone, all you can have is a single-family dwelling, which frankly has caused quite a few people some real concern, people that have plans to take advantage of development opportunities and build duplexes and fourplexes and things like that, but making it for some of the reasons that have been mentioned tonight, the city made that change for the day, you just have a single-family dwelling, and if your property's big enough, you can have an accessory apartment.
With that said...
Exactly, yeah. While I'm here, I need to correct one thing. We do not allow tandem parking for purposes of meeting a parking requirement. Obviously, if somebody parks a car behind another one on their property, that's, we're not going to worry about that, but it was unsettled, I thought I was going to be wrong about that, and I was, so.
All right, any other comments? I'll go ahead and then close the public hearing and ask the commissioners if they have any questions first.
When you say there's, they don't allow tandem parking?
That's not the ordinance reason, I kind of think you probably need to rephrase that.
Because, how would that fit this project, and how many cars legally could they put on this project, or if it went to an accessory apartment and be legal? Does anybody know?
You can park way more than four cars on this property without having to tandem.
Okay.
But, but you have to have at least space for four cars.
I do, I do.
That's correct.
And two of them have to be...
And they can't be tandem, so you move any of them to the street with that.
Exactly, that's the...
I have a question about the ownership of the property, because now that seems to be very confusing to me. So the rule is that to have an accessory apartment, the owner has to live in the home. But it seems like we're confused on who even owns the home. Is the applicant the owner of the home, and do they live there? Because if that's not, how do we, then why would we be doing this?
Yeah, the applicant is either recently purchased now, or I know that they have the property under contract to purchase it, one of the two.
Oh.
And with that, they're, they're aware of that condition, that they would have to reside if they use the property for the accessory apartment. And just relative to our procedure, it's not uncommon for us to consider different zone change requests and things like that, when an applicant hasn't necessarily closed on the property, but just has plans to do that with the consent of the current owner. For most of the proposals that you see, in fact, that's the case because people don't want to buy something until they're sure that they can maybe develop a subdivision or build a shopping center or something like that, so that's typically kind of the timing of things.
Any other, any other questions?
I'll ask one more question. I don't know that this can change, I mean, because obviously we can impose conditions, but because of the, it meets all the other requirements, we can't stop this from happening, but we can apply, apply conditions.
Correct.
So what was concerned was the historical preservation of the area, and I think, you know, there's many people who care about the preservation of historical things. What is the city's position on, I mean, if I bought a piece of property and wanted to tear down the house, is there a law that stops someone from doing that if it's historical? Like we're, I'm just trying to understand.
Relative to the city's possession, that's, I don't want to be the spokesperson for, let's just say, the city council on that, because they probably have different opinions. But I can tell you what regulations we have and what we don't have, and in short, we don't have regulations that would prevent somebody from tearing down or substantially modifying any building in the city if the property owner chose to do that. And it's my understanding that, that lack of regulation that we have, it really is directly tied to officials' beliefs that people should have the opportunity and right to be able to do what they want with their property. But that said, we've talked several times, just in time I've worked for the city, about different things that could happen, maybe to create, for example, an historic district that wouldn't necessarily put any limitations in place, or prevent somebody from tearing down a building, or modifying it to the point that you wouldn't recognize it doing any of those types of things, it might simply just give somebody an incentive to preserve the historic character of a building. So there's some things like that that we could do as a city without really spending a lot of time and money, but in the end, it wouldn't necessarily be a real strong safeguard against having, you know, maybe a home like this, which it'd be great to pull up the street view of this, because, yeah, this would be great historic character, it's a beautiful home, type of thing I think you'd absolutely want to preserve and promote somebody to, to reinvest in and keep up and maintain. One way to, to make it very difficult for somebody to alter a structure or remove it is to have a structure placed on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's, that's, that's a more stringent, difficult process to go through, but short of having that designation, I, I'm not sure that there's a lot that, you know, at a local level, a city can do to...
Maybe there's a state designation as well, but...
I'm thinking the district, maybe fits more in that category.
If it's a state, you can structure it and designate it.
But I mean, it's beautiful, right? I mean, this is the type of thing that you don't want to see messed up. I mean, any, any, in my opinion, modification to the exterior of that building, it's going to mess it up. Let's not say, in this case, the applicants could propose to do that at some point in the future if they'd like, they haven't done that. Like I said, the proposal is to keep the exterior of the structure completely intact as you see there, and I'll keep my personal concerns to myself, I guess, on it, but I'm glad to be that.
Is that the entrance to the, to the unit?
That's my understanding, yeah.
It's the basement entrance.
Basement entrance. So that'd be, and they would still need to have, would you, are you required to have a separate entrance?
We don't necessarily require that. Typically, you have it. We don't necessarily require it.
Any other questions?
We can talk more about that, by the way, about creating a district.
I think that is a really good point. I think that...
We have talked about it before, and honestly, the idea has not been of any traction.
I guess my sense is, first of all, I think we need to be clear that this isn't changing the zoning at all on it, but that the current zoning allows this to happen, and so as a, as a planning commission, we can't say no. So that's the plain and simple of it for us, but what we can do is look at, is, you know, what is the impact of this proposed development, and are there any conditions that we need to place upon it to, to limit that impact beyond what's already in code? And again, correct me if I'm mis, misstating anything. I agree with the staff that the character of the building is, is wonderful as an architect, I really appreciate it. I don't believe that this will change the character of that in terms of the structure itself. It sounds to me like the only concerns or comments comes down to the number of people and/or number of vehicles. That's the sense that I get, is that, would you guys agree with that?
And also, how it would be policed to make sure it was compliant always?
Right.
Can I make a comment on that? I mean, not that it's my job, but, you know, I think the most important thing in our community is to help make Spanish work the great community that it is, is that we reach out and get to know our neighbors. You all look like people who do that, so get to know the owner, know who they are, build that relationship, and a lot of your worries are going to be taken care of.
Sounds like the sale is pending this approval.
I just saw some of the issues that I've lived in as well, that we've made the difference, the neighbors made all the difference.
What kind of limitation can you put on who lives there legally? I mean, really, what could we say? You have to be a family to live in an accessory apartment? You can't be students to live in an accessory apartment? I, I don't know what you can say and what you can't do legally.
It seems like in the past, we've said something like two adults and, two adults and one child, or something like that. Isn't that how we've done it in the past?
Yeah, we've only, we've only waded into that discussion one time that I'm aware of, and it, it can become pretty problematic. I, I'd recommend that you consider a number, and nothing more than that. I don't think, unfortunately, we want to try to define family.
Yeah, that's, that's big.
And some cities, incidentally, when it comes to situations like this, they have adopted regulations that say, you bring me two adults and one child, and you hear of stories that have pulled into people's heartstrings and making the cities look really bad when, you know, that first child gets joined by a baby brother or a baby sister, and all of a sudden, you've got a compliance issue, and...
We don't, what, I mean, is this a one-bedroom unit downstairs, two bedrooms?
I think it's two bedrooms down, and one, yeah, two bedrooms.
It's two bedrooms, yeah.
And one upstairs.
It used to be two up, and then it's...
There's just one now that you're calling up, and there's one upstairs.
Yeah, so there's only three bedrooms in the whole house, right?
There's two downstairs, and one upstairs.
One thing they do have is they have two exits in case of fire. You've got one in the front and one in the other.
To the basement?
Just the one entrance.
Oh, yeah.
They've got two.
So I, I guess I would feel comfortable saying two adults, so that gives two students that could live there, but again, you're still limiting it to two vehicles, potentially. But if you say two or four, if you say four adults, then all of a sudden you've got four cars there, so I think if you say two adults, that could be the flexibility.
And no, no, no limit on juveniles, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know, I mean, to me, if it, I mean, if it's me, I'm in a two-bedroom apartment and I have two kids, I'm okay with that. As soon as I get to three, then you're, you're going to want to move anyway.
And that's how I look at it. I think that becomes self-regulating. I don't want to be calling Jason to say he's going to prosecute somebody because they've got to be, right? I mean, that's, that'd be my...
It just looks awful to try to do it that way.
Two adults doesn't sound too bad. Of course, in the act of defining adult, but...
Yeah, people still call me juvenile all the time.
We know what a judge would say, though, James.
That's right.
We're covered that way.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, office comment. I, I mean, the, the feedback is really good and really helpful, it's pretty clear that you, you know, really love your neighborhood and you want to see it stay the way it is, and as I look at this proposal and many others that we see, a lot of times I think to myself, well, if we didn't make any change, if this proposal was not even before us, in reality, some of the same concerns you have could, could be a concern if, with just one new move in, one, one change in ownership, or, you know, two teenagers becoming driver age, you know, and then all of a sudden you have these same issues, and, and, you know, preservation is a really good idea, there's these, you know, some of these unique properties around town, and I don't know that this will affect that, but it just seems to me that when, when we, when we evaluate these types of things, at least for me, I try to look at things like safety, you know, what, what safety concerns would there be for the people in the, in the unit, but also the neighborhood, you know, that would be important to consider. And I almost feel like the number of vehicles is more important if we're putting any limitations than the number of people, because it's the coming and going of vehicles that cause a lot of impact, and, I mean, I, I don't really see a reason that's rooted in safety or big impact on the, on the neighborhood to say, you know, we shouldn't do this, but it seems reasonable to, to try to limit the, the volume of people that will be there if you can, and, and like you could say, two vehicles and however number of people, if, I, I think you could stick to the number of people versus adult, child... This is, there is power, but the moment of power, huh? Okay, so anyway, I, that's just my feeling and I think in reality, the policing of it, it will be no different than any other, other areas in town. You know, the city is pretty good to follow up on things that it knows about. And I know that the gentleman that was here had a real concern about a situation in another part of the city. You know, I don't know anything about that, but my experience with the city is that, you know, if there is a violation and it's reported, that they will follow up on it and I have all the confidence that they'll do that here, so. Anyway, those are just, those are my comments. I, I think we, we, you know, we don't really have much choice, we should approve it and, I would support like four individuals living there and two vehicles.
Two in each unit? I mean, there's two units.
Oh, two units down, you mean downstairs and upstairs?
Right.
I think we're talking about just the accessory apartment that we're, sometimes I wonder whether that's the upstairs or downstairs based on what they're saying.
So yeah, any accessory, whichever that turns out to be, that's what I was thinking. And then two vehicles. Of course, that doesn't mean that on a weekend, if, you know, if it's a, a person that has some children or some friends sleeping over and it has, you know, for 24, 28 hours...
We would take that probably to mean that a registered people that reside there, that type of thing.
So are we saying four people or two?
I have the idea of, trying to put a number on, on the children necessarily if there's a family there and like you say, you've got two kids and you have a baby, well, you're out tomorrow or whatever. I like the idea of indicating how many adults. We limit that to which would indicate how many cars, first of all, that you're meeting with.
Exactly, you can always have a teenager.
And I would feel bad if there were five kids living here, obviously.
You don't want to put a small one.
Yeah, and that, you know...
Would you like to make a motion?
We just had that one condition?
Well, we've got, there's three conditions that the, the...
The development committee is already...
Do you want that, Jason? Oops. It's there on the left-hand column, there's three items there.
And they were adding?
And they were adding the condition of limiting two adults in the accessory apartment.
Have to meet the conditions of the development committee plus.
There you go.
So is it, is it two adults, but there could be children, like two?
Do we specify children in the...
I think we did specify.
With the understanding that they could have children.
Yeah.
Do we say that?
It'd be helpful somehow, make sure we go that.
Do I need to make the motion?
I can make it. Okay, so I'll make the motion that we approve the conditional use of the property on 260 West 300 North as an access, to have an accessory apartment with the conditions outlined in the Development Review Committee with the additional condition that the accessory apartment can have only two adults living there as well as any children.
And two vehicles.
And no more vehicles, but that's already part of the Title 13.
Not necessarily.
No, two vehicles is the minimum required.
Parking for two.
Parking for two.
With no, with an additional condition that they only be able to have two vehicles tied with accessory.
Good. So I have a motion by Commissioner Tagg. Do we have a second?
I'll certainly.
Second by Commissioner Nielsen. Go ahead and do a roll call vote, starting with...
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your time. It's very much appreciated and we wish that more people would come out to these meetings. Thank you.